I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor Bernice Flanagan, the mother-in-law of our instructional assistant, Carol Lee Flanagan, and the grandmother of Clinton Middle School teacher, Ashley Cowett. This is the Clinton Public Schools School Committee meeting for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. This meeting is being held both in-person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, general law, Section 20. This remote meeting is accessible via Google Meet technology. And one of our members tonight, Ms. Goodsell, is joining us remotely as well. So as a result, we will have our -- any votes will be a roll-call vote. Can I have a motion to accept the bills?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion having been seconded, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, Joel Bates' eye.
Matt Baracus' eye.
Tina Zapantas' eye.
Brendan Bailey, eye.
You there, Deb? We had a little feedback.
Deborah Goodsell, eye.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve. There are the minutes of November 13th and the minutes of November 16th. Can I have a motion to accept both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, Joel Bates' eye.
Matt Baracus' eye.
Tina Zapantas' eye.
Brendan Bailey, eye.
Deborah Goodsell, eye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment tonight? Dr. Meyer, do you see any comment online?
I do not see any comment online.
Okay. All right, thank you. Dr. Meyer, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. The first thing we have on our agenda here is some recognitions. We have -- so included in your packet is a list of the John and Abigail Adams Scholars. Thirty-two of our seniors qualified for this scholarship. This is based on academic achievements as judged by the MCAS exam and also against the top 25 percent of their senior class. So we have a list there. We also have four AP Scholars. I don't know if you want me to read the names or we can -- I could read the names now, but I think what we'll also do is we'll typically we invite these students here and we usually give them a little gift or something. So I think what we'll do is try to -- we'll reach out, extend invitation to maybe come pick something up at the office, or we can send it to them. Would you like me to read the names just for the recognition?
Please, sure.
Okay. So our John and Abigail, 2020 John Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients, Alyssa Baja-Joseph, Emma Brulay, James Burke, Owen Coyne, Kyle Cupertino, Eric Decoto, Tanner Fidel, Jordan Frempong, Jonathan Guerra, Mia Hu, William Gent, Dominic Kumbis, Alyssa LeBlanc, Danielle Lemansky, Cadi Lopez, Matthias Usina, Keith Mayford, Gabrielle Mesquita, Alexander Naughton, Raina Nelson, Antonio Neves, Devin Arario, Garrett Osborne, Juan Rojas, Jocelyn Rosignol, Daniel Scanlon, Farah Sharire, Colin Small, Dylan Stevens, Alexander Tringali, Casey Terjaron, and Anna Zeltaney. Our AP Scholars, we have Anya Frisch, Class of 2020, Alyssa LeBlanc, Class of 2021, Jocelyn Rosignol, Class of 2021, and Farah Sharire, Class of 2021. So those are our students that we would typically invite up on this stage, but we'll reach out to them and we'll get them a sort of a recognition gift like we normally do. So congratulations to all those students.
Congratulations, indeed.
All right, our next order of business, we have two people here to introduce. Our first one is our Family Outreach Coordinator. So starting on Monday, I think it was, right, Monday, Guadalupe Pium started as our Family Outreach Coordinator. Guadalupe is here tonight. Guadalupe is -- she's fluent in three languages, speaks Spanish, Portuguese, as well as English, and she will be helping to lead our family outreach efforts. We've already started sort of a Google Form process that hopefully teachers can use to request assistance from Guadalupe if they need it for when they're reaching out to parents or for an IEP meeting. We're also working on getting it on the webpage so it'll be accessible so parents can request assistance if they feel they need any type of support for whatever meetings or processes that they might need assistance with. So Guadalupe, I don't know if you want to say hi?
Yeah, you're right up there, and then you should -- they should hear you if you talk. All right, hi everybody. My name is Guadalupe. I'm delighted to be part of the team here in Clinton and look forward to working with everybody. I'm located at the central office here in Clinton. I'm now office president for the Spade Department. I would love to work with everybody.
Thank you very much. We're thrilled, thrilled to have you as part of the school district in this absolutely necessary role.
And I'd say she's jumped right in and been busy since before she even started. We were already kind of having her help work with transitioning in some families moving to town, so we're excited to have her. Our second person we'd like to introduce is the new Human Resource Manager for the town, Alexis Tixera. And so Alexis has started probably a couple weeks ago. We had an opportunity to meet earlier this week and really talk about some of the vision for what we see the school's needing for support from the HR position. But we think that, you know, going through the hiring process with Alexis, I mean she's had experience in this role and she's, you know, I think she'll bring a much-needed -- help provide some much-needed consistency to across the town because she's a -- works for the, you know, it's a town position, particularly around things like how we handle like leaves of absence and stuff like that with COVID and all those types of things. So Alexis, I don't know if you want to say, say hi?
Yep, that's fine. The mic will pick up your ambient sound.
Nice to see all of you who have worked for the town and the school district. Very much looking forward to having consistency. I have noticed that there are some inconsistencies between what the town offers and then what the school has in terms of policies and should remind that I think will be very helpful for all of us, including as well as, you know, the power and the town students, the teachers and everybody else to have and have the information. And I am located in the town hall. If anybody needs me on the social side, I'm normally at the morgue, but if that's only an email or phone call, anytime you need me.
It's wonderful. Again, thank you, thank you for stepping into this role in this long overdue position.
And I'd say Alexis is another one who has really come in trying to hit the ground running and really looking at, you know, meeting with departments and trying to, you know, get a sense of what our current operations are so we can try to find some of those efficiencies. Okay. So the next one is reopening updates. So in your packet, you have the chart that I update each week that has our graph. You know, you can see we reached a high of 40.1 cases for 100,000 back on the 19th of November. On the 27th, when the next data came out, we were down to, we dropped a little bit to 35.5, still in the red. Our percent positivity was still at 6.2. I think this week, the data hot off the press here has our numbers, our average daily incidence per 100,000 crept back up a little bit to 37, and our percent positivity crept up a little bit again to 7.41. So I guess it's maybe good news and bad news. I mean essentially, it seems like we're kind of holding a little more steady right there right now, which I know given the, you know, I know statewide, the last couple of days with cases have been, you know, some of the highest they've seen. So, you know, hopefully we're starting to see a stop to that spike trend that we had if we can maybe get some hold steady a little bit and maybe hopefully we can see that come down in the near future. So, you know, based on those numbers, there's a couple things as we move forward with our learning model. So the first thing is, if you remember, you know, we voted to go to Remote Learning Plus. For the first phase of Remote Learning Plus, we invited approximately 300 students, all the students who were attending both weeks under the hybrid model, were invited to return to school in-person. Of those 300 that were invited, approximately 200 chose to come back to school in-person. So what we're planning on proceeding with, unless there's any objection by the committee, is we're hoping to roll out what we're calling Phase Two of the remote learning process. And essentially what has happened is the state outlined a pretty specific process for looking at regression of special education students, and our special education staff has been analyzing that data throughout the fall. So we do have a list of students who mostly are students who weren't considered high need students because they're more, I'd say, moderate need students. But as we've looked at the data, we've seen that they, it appears as though they would benefit from in-person instruction as well at this point to stop any regression. So there's approximately 100 more students that we would like to invite back as part of Phase Two. You know, if you think about it, it's essentially filling the slots of the 100 that elected not to accept Phase One. And then, you know, obviously, if we, if it plays out anything, we might only be getting additional 60 students or 70 students if the percentages hold about the same. In addition to those students at the high school, there are not as many of those students who have been identified at the high school, but there are students who have been identified for a couple other reasons. In particular, the areas that we're highlighting right now are seniors that based on the first quarter grades could be potentially needing some support to ensure graduation. And there's also some seniors who need to take the MCAS retake. So we're trying to prioritize getting the seniors, those seniors back in as part of this kind of expansion of the Remote Learning Plus model for now. So I don't know if there's any questions or concerns with us moving forward with that Phase Two, or if that's acceptable by the committee?
I don't believe we have to take any action on it. It's a continuation of the work that we're doing.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, we're all on the same page. Okay. So I think because it's, right, because it's the same learning model, it's still Remote Learning Plus, but we're essentially moving to Phase Two, and then we'll proceed. Our timeline is to try to notify those families tomorrow and then to hopefully have them start attending classes on Wednesday so we can get a couple days in there so that we can, teachers can prepare for who would be coming back once we know who's accepting those offers.
So Steve, we could expect that at any time if that list were to grow or we would be looking at other groups of folks. We would want to clearly define like you have tonight around, for example, you know, folks that may have seen regression that could be on an IEP or a 504, so we want to get them back into school, which makes total sense to me. And/or high school seniors that need specific support around testing or grad support. We would define at any point in time different groups of kids that might come back. It'd be pretty specific.
Correct. I think that's, you know, we're trying not to make this just, you know, it's not based on who knows who or who sent the most emails or anything like that. We're trying to have a criteria that we're looking at so that we're affording that opportunity to everyone who meets that criteria.
Correct.
So that's our goal. And I think the other thing is I know, you know, I know there was some people brought up, you know, concerns about the fact that this is, you know, we voted to do this for consistency and now we're adding more kids. And I guess the way that I could describe that though is just, this is an invitation. We're trying to reach out to families who we feel that this could be a benefit to. If they feel that their situation is under control and they choose not to accept that, that is their choice, so.
Very good, thank you.
All right. So then the next, the next part of the reopening update that I'd like to talk about is the, is kind of gearing up and preparing for after the January, for that January 19th date. So there was a separate handout that I gave you tonight. It was, it should have been on top of your packets, but it just describes kind of our reopening process. It really started this afternoon. I had a meeting this afternoon with CTA President and Vice President, and we started kind of talking about some of these concerns, not concerns, some of the potential options as we move forward. And really just tried to kind of start looking at the MOU from the beginning of the year a little bit to try to say, you know, are there areas in this MOU that either we didn't anticipate and therefore the MOU is silent, or really as we might transition back into a slightly different model, are there things that we need to now, you know, expand upon the MOU and almost do an addendum or something like that? So we had some preliminary conversations today. I thought they went very well. Tonight presenting this plan to you, our first real action step of the plan is for tomorrow. We'd like to distribute what we're calling a mid-year learning plan survey to families. That survey is attached to this handout. And essentially, it's very similar to kind of what we asked over in the beginning of the year, although a little bit more streamlined. And what we're asking people to do is pretty much say, you know, as we phase in students, if your student was offered a full-time in-person spot, would you send your student to school in-person? And then would they need transportation? And then if we're unable to phase in all students to full-time in-person, but we could offer hybrid learning, would you send your student? And then there's some questions there. So what we're trying to see is, is, you know, who wants to, you know, who wants, who's comfortable sending their students back to school at this point so we can gauge, you know, how many, how many students can we, how many families can we accommodate? And we did have a section on here, and we did note in here that if we did try to, we understand that if we get back to some sort of hybrid model, if that's what it indicates, we need to make changes to our hybrid model. I think we have some lessons learned from the first round of hybrid, and we know we need to kind of provide more support during those hybrid days. So there is a little question here that if people would like to see some changes to better support, if we had to go to a hybrid, you can fill that in, but we do recognize that we do need to provide more support. And the final question is just a reminder to people about the flu shot and just trying to get a quick snapshot of if their student has had the flu shot or if they intend to get the flu shot, just so that we can kind of get a snapshot of that data as well. So that's pretty much the survey we're planning on doing. I think as we, as we, once we gather this data, our goal is to look at it and say, you know, how can we, how can we adjust our reopening plan? How can we look at either opening in a hybrid or fully in-person model based on the numbers? One thing that we are anticipating that will probably happen is that we will probably, whatever model we go into when we first reopen, we're probably going to recommend staying at the shortened hours that we're doing right now for the Remote Plus because what that does is that's, it still, it gets the meal service out of the day. It allows us to continue with the grab-and-go meals, which eliminates the time where students have to have their masks off. It also helps with some of the space constraints. If you remember, if you saw in the beginning of the year when we opened up, you had all the chairs outside that the high school kids would eat on and, and the, you know, things like some of that outdoor space we know is not going to be available in February, you know, or late January, early February. So we're thinking when we bring people back, we'd like to do it on sort of that more shortened day. The other thing that does is that leaves some availability in the afternoon for teachers to support students who might be learning remotely for whatever the reason is, whether it's a hybrid model, whether it's just it was their choice to do so, those types of things. So our plan is to try to piece that together based on, like I said, our lessons learned, our capacity. And I think the first thing that we need to do, the first concrete step to this, is to get this data so that we know, you know, really what it is the public wants. You know, I know we hear from some, from parents who really want to get their kids back, and we, and I understand that, and I want to, and I want to get as many kids back as we can. We also hear from parents who feel, you know, that they're thankful we're doing the right, they feel like we're doing the right thing right now. They feel like that, you know, cases are spiking and they're thankful that we're being, you know, cautious about this right now. So I think, you know, over the summer when we did this survey, it came back about 20 percent of the students wanted to be remote learners. You know, like I said, when we just did that first way, first phase of the Remote Plus, about a third of the students elected not to, not to, not to come back. So that was 33%, right? So we don't know exactly what that number is going to be. We also know this was one of the things that was putting a big strain on the system a couple weeks ago, right before we went to remote, because as there was the uptick in cases and as there was starting to be cases in the schools, we did have a lot of parents who were calling and calling and calling to try to switch into remote sections. So I think this gives us an opportunity to capture what it is our families want, so hopefully we can try to redesign our plan a little bit to try to accommodate as many families as possible. And we're hoping that this data, you know, by this point, people have maybe a better sense in their head of maybe what remote learning looks like this year. They also maybe have a better sense of what it was like for their student to come to school, wearing a mask and doing those things. So we're hoping that when people answer this survey, you know, it's a little more informed because they have some ideas of what it was like to be in school and what it was like to learn remotely. The final thing we're asking, and we do say that in the beginning here, we are trying to ask parents to try to think about what they would like to do, you know, when they're answering this survey, what they would like, learning model they'd like to see for their students through April vacation. So we're trying to kind of put that as a, you know, we're going, if we have to reset, if we have to shuffle classes, if we have to do things like that, we'd like to try to plan on doing it for essentially, kind of like the third quarter of the year. So if you think about it, it's almost like the first quarter of the year, we were essentially in that hybrid model. Kind of the second quarter, we've been more in the Remote, Remote Plus model. I think now as we look forward, we're trying to get the data to really prepare for the third quarter, and then hopefully we can kind of, you know, continue to just expand upon that as things continue to change. Like I said, you know, we know vaccines and those types of things, you're hearing about those rolling out soon, and you never know how that could change the landscape and the warmer weather as we move towards the, towards the spring. I think that's most of, you know, what I wanted to talk about. I think on the 11th, we're going to close the survey, so that's like about one week to try to, we're asking parents to please complete this in a week. It's a very short survey, so it's just as long as they know what they want. We are asking them to complete the survey for each student, just like we did in the summer. We will try to start having our administrative team do some preliminary review on December 14th. Also on December 14th, this is tentative, it's not set in stone yet, but I've talked to Mike Ward and Steve Lipka, the town manager and the Chair of the Board of Health, about trying to have a meeting on December 14th. And actually, Steve Lipka was the one that really kind of mentioned that idea of trying to kind of get a meeting together of the town department, you know, probably, we'll probably offer, you know, see if we can get a school committee member if they want to come, and probably a selectman, and maybe looking at, you know, the police department, fire department, those types of things, just to really get a check-in on the whole town and just to kind of see where we're, where our stress points are and what we can do to, what we think we're able, capable of doing moving forward, just to get a check on that. So then we would hope that, so we're hoping we would have that, at least a snapshot of that data so we could bring that to the meeting, so we could try to give some indication of maybe where we're leaning. And then we would present that data on our December 14th school committee meeting here so that we could, you know, we could move forward. One other note I just made on here, just so people know, we will be communicating some information to the families of juniors. All juniors are going to have to take the MCAS in January because they were unable to take it in last year as sophomores. So what we're looking at doing is probably scheduling a couple days that they could come in, literally sit at the setting where they would take their test, have a couple review sessions, those types of things, just to get them comfortable and kind of in the test-taking mode, and then we'd bring them in for their testing. We're probably going to look at doing that, kind of using sort of the old green-gold system, so greens, you know, everyone in green cohort comes in one day to take their test, everyone in gold cohort comes in the next day to take their tests, just so we can get through that, that period. So starting in January, we will have, you know, the juniors will be in here. I mean, it's five days of testing, so it's two days for math and three days for English. So if we're bringing two cohorts, it's 10 days of testing, plus if we do a couple review days, you know, practice days, so people are comfortable in their test setting, you know, we're talking 12 to 14 days of school in January where we're going to have at least, you know, half the junior class in the building as we go through that. And then the only final thing I think, but it's not, you know, as we get the data, we're also continuing to look at our pre-K programs too. And, you know, for right now, we kind of condense them to the morning. We might end up sort of re-expanding those to AM and PM. And then I think, you know, we can see as we progress through the spring, if there's a point that we want to try to capture any of those students who were unable to enroll earlier in the year, if they feel that that's an appropriate thing to do at that point based on our numbers and the, and the numbers in town. That's, I think, pretty much where we are right now. I don't know if there's any questions on this, on the plan or concerns?
It continues to be a well-thought-out, data-driven process, which I appreciate and can't be said enough, that it's a proactive plan, you know, where we're dealing with And yet, while we're in the middle of this, this time, we're also looking ahead to, you know, the steps that we can take to meet that goal, to bring, to bring everybody back eventually, so. Questions? Nope.
Okay. So we'll look to, our goal will be, I'll be, I'll have Guadalupe check my Google Translate tomorrow, and we'll, we'll start getting this out to families so that we can start gathering that data and try to make the next informed decision.
It's exciting to see a potential light at the end of the tunnel.
I hope so.
A long tunnel.
I hope so. I did just want to mention, just for our meeting's sake, I know most of you were in attendance, but we did have the special town meeting on Monday. There is a copy of the warrant is included here, so it was approved, I think it was unanimous, to amend our appropriation from $23,559,095 to $24,524,279. And that money was basically a reflection of the increase in Chapter 70, or the state aid for education, that the town received. If you remember, at the time when the town passed their budget, the state had not indicated what they were going to do for Chapter 70, so the town budget was built under the assumption that Chapter 70 was going to be level-funded. And then when it was not level-funded, it resulted in this increase, and so this was basically appropriating that increase to us. However, if you see on the, on the next page, there's kind of a snapshot of the changes, and those, the accounts on the far left there, the school salaries, special needs, okay, those are the, those are the town accounts for, those are the accounts we report to the town. And what we did was, if you, if you look at the bottom line, total school expenditures, we're trying to keep our total school expenditures the same, $25,101,987. So I think it's important for people to realize, and this is explained to town floor, this appropriation is not increasing our, our budget for this year. What, rather, what we're doing is it's allowing us to reduce the amount of circuit breaker that we would be using this year by $222,000. And what we, you can see what we did is we increased the special needs line by $222,000. Circuit breaker is essentially a reimbursement for extraordinary special education charges, and you get that sort of a year after, and then you have one year to spend it. So typically what we've done is we try to spend our circuit breaker in that second year, the one year you can carry over. And what it does is it allows, you know, if we have an unbudgeted out-of-district placement, and our district placement can run $100,000 easily, depending on if it's a residential, it could be more than that. So by having that circuit breaker kind of one year in reserve, that means if we do have a couple out-of-district placements that come up during the course of a year, we have that circuit breaker funding to be able to absorb. we have that circuit breaker funding to be able to absorb them without making, um, significant budget reductions mid-year. The second one was school choice. Uh, we had originally budgeted to spend $758,336 on school choice this year. Uh, typically we, you know, we were projected to receive $531,000, $531,279 in revenue this year. So we would have been spending, um, about $220,000 more than we would have received, uh, for circuit breaker, or for school choice, excuse me. Um, and if you remember, the same idea, there's a little bit of a cushion in that, in that school choice account. We try to spend more than we receive every year, you know, we try to spend what we need to keep our programming up, um, but we try to do so at a sustainable pace. And if we had to spend that whole $758,000 out of circuit breaker this year, or school choice this year, excuse me, that really wasn't a sustainable pace. If you remember when we talked about the budget, we said, you know, we changed that because, I think my quote was something to the effect of, what's the, what's the point of having a rainy day fund if you're not going to use it when it's raining, right? So that was our, our goal. Because we're able to change this, that $703,000, you can see we moved that up to the school salaries line. That's all the teacher salaries, that reflects all the teacher salaries that are actually paid out of school choice. Uh, we've moved those into the budget for this year. And the thought process is, you know, the projections now are starting to come in saying that they really think FY '22, or the next fiscal year, is going to be a much more lean year than FY '21 ended up being. Cause now we're seeing the, the lack, now that we're, we're really living with the lack of, of tax revenue and things that are, are not going to be coming in. Um, for this year, during FY '21, uh, it's going to be harder to budget for FY '22. So part of the thought process on this is now it allows us to keep that money in school choice, uh, so that way if next year is a difficult budget year for the, for the town, um, we can, we have that, we have that resource there to use, um, for next year. So overall, I thought it was, you know, I think it was a, a great, um, example of a working relationship with the Finance Committee, uh, the Selectmen, School Committee, so that we could just sort of, uh, better position ourselves, uh, for, for FY '22. Any questions on?
Just a statement, I, I do as well, I, I think it, it's an excellent example of the partnerships that you've built and continue to nurture with, with all of our town boards. And I'm appreciative of the, the Finance Committee and the Select Board and for, for, you know, for working with us, for, for going to the extraordinary, um, circumstances they had to, to have a, uh, a special town meeting during a pandemic and, and to be able to, to, to take this action, we're grateful.
I just had a question about the, um, all the COVID extra expenses this year.
Yep.
All the PPE, all that. Is the school going to have to incur any expenses from that? Is that all handled at the town level with monies that may be coming in as aid specific to COVID? Is that all being handled through?
Yeah, for the most part, um, what is, so if you remember, we received about $288,000, uh, through a, um, uh, what was called ESER grant earlier in the year, that was part of the CARES Act, I probably called it CARES Act money earlier in the year, but really it's, it's, the, the final definition was ESER. We then received approximately $400,000 through the CVRF, which was like the COVID, uh, relief fund. Um, and that was based on like $250 a student, and that was really geared for technology or, um, PPE, those types of things. Additionally, the town had received about a little over a million dollars, I believe, maybe 1.2, something to that effect, from the CARES Act directly to the town. And a lot of, um, once again, you know, through our facilities departments, since it was sort of a joint between the town and the, and the schools, um, a lot of the modifications to buildings and stuff that needed to be made, a lot of the, uh, you know, the hand sanitizers things, like we were able to kind of access those funds, uh, from the, from the town CARES Act money through the facilities department to, to upgrade that. So, um, right, so I think it's, you know, once again, I think it was, uh, it's been pretty collaborative, it's allowed us to sort of build up where we needed in terms of technology, in terms of PPE. That being said, you know, the next, the next item is the FY '22 budget timeline. And, and that's one of the big million-dollar questions we were talking about in our, in our admin meeting is, what does school look like next year? Right? Is there going to be an expectation that there's still some sort of remote learning option? Is there going, you know, what is still going to be required? Are we still going to be required to have masks? Are we still going to be required to have, you know, hand sanitizer? And, and are we still going to need to do the same level of cleaning? And, and I think the, the idea is, I don't know, besides the masks, I think everything else is actually pretty good. I mean, it helps keep the building cleaner and, and that's probably just, those are probably just better practices as long as we can sustain them. Um, so I think when we build our budget this year, uh, we'll try to probably have a couple line items set aside that represent, um, anticipated COVID expenses like PPE. And that way, those are hopefully things that can be easily, uh, parsed out of the budget, if, if we do get additional like federal government relief, uh, for those expenses. But I do, I do know as we, as we move forward with next year's budget, you know, we do have to look at, what would that cost us as we go forward, so.
Thank you.
Steve, just one other question, I could ask this under old business, but it probably relates here. I think our last meeting, we talked a little bit about, um, there being some additional CARES Act money where we were looking to potentially do two studies, one at the high school and one at the elementary school, and that money had to be spent before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Whether we do the studies or, or not is one question, I suppose, especially in light of Director Colstat no longer being here. And then secondarily, do we have monies that are in that account that we still need to spend? And if we haven't, how do we plan to do so, so we don't lose out on that value?
Yep. So, uh, there's kind of two funds that fall under that category. The first one from the schools is our direct appropriation from the, um, CVRF, that $400,000. We have to spend that by December 31st. We are, we are on track to do that. Uh, we had a network and, and that was put together some reports for me to, to kind of really track down where we are. Some of the things that we have been able to put in there are some of the, um, uh, like busing increases that we've incurred for some of the extra runs and those types of things, some of the PPE, the technology. And it's one of the topics that we did talk about, um, uh, Steve Lipka and I talked about a little bit was if we have that sort of department chair meeting on December 14th, of trying to use that to identify, um, are there any specific needs that we need to, to stock up on, get an order in, do whatever so that we have that money? Kind of, uh, if there's, and at that point, it would be that, this would be the town's CARES Act allotment. You know, is there something, PPE, cleaning products, wipes, things like that, that we want to try to stock up on or, or any other major things, so that we can try to spend that money down, um, as well? So we are looking into that. Uh, the status of those, of the studies, I, I'm not, I, I'll have to follow up on that because I, I'm not sure. But, uh, but as far as monitoring that money, yeah, I mean, we're trying to, I know from the schools end, um, the stuff that, that we're spending, we're trying to make sure that the federal government's giving us money, we're going to spend it all.
Great, thank you.
So the next, the next page in there is the FY '22 budget timeline. So we did meet, uh, earlier this week as an admin meeting, we have distributed, uh, our annual staffing survey to our staff, where we just try to get, uh, projections of who may be retiring in the next three years, uh, who might be moving up on the salary scale based on, you know, completing their master's degree or other, or other kind of landmark credits, uh, so that we can start, you know, projecting our, our staff salaries for next year. You know, today we're just reviewing the, the timeline. Uh, we have, we're getting the forms out to staff, uh, I think the, the elementary school has already held some meetings to really talk about what they need for supplies for next year. Uh, I think the, uh, the other buildings will be starting that process in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we have some, some forms that we're preparing that they'll be completing so that we can gather that data. And then we got a couple of other meetings, we're going to meet pretty much every week for the next couple, uh, weeks. Next week's focus is going to be primarily on looking at kind of the, the bigger pick, uh, purchases and things like curriculum and technology, trying to see, you know, every year there are things like consumable workbooks at the elementary school or things like that, to make sure that we have those big-ticket items in there. Um, and then we'll, we'll start really looking at the enrollment projections at that time too, of, you know, so we might see what changes we need to make to individual sections. And then on the 15th, we'll really start trying to place staffing, looking at that staffing survey and, and trying to identify, uh, you know, how we need to, to best deploy our existing staff and what areas we, we may need to, uh, make adjustments to our staffing. Um, and once we have that, once we kind of have those key processes done, um, you know, we'll start just kind of principals will review, I'll meet with the principals and once in the business manager, we'll, we'll start compiling the budget. So we're hoping, um, it's a little later this year than normal, just because we got a little bit later start, because we had to kind of wait till we even got an FY '21 budget before we could start on FY '22. But the, uh, so our plan is to present a preliminary budget, uh, at the school committee meeting on February 8th. Uh, so that's when we will do that, remember, and that's a preliminary one, that's usually a little bit, a little bit higher, although this year in anticipation, we are asking people to please try to really focus on, on what they view to be, uh, necessities for the curriculum, to implement a curriculum next year. So I think, uh, I think that brings us to the next topic, which is athletics. In your packet, I think actually you had it as a separate insert in your packet, you have some, uh, you have a winter athletics letter, uh, from, uh, Mr. Smith, the athletic director, and you also kind of have, you have the COVID protocols and guidelines for the winter season for our, our league. So the goal for our league is to start on Monday, December 14th, that's the earliest schools will begin, tryouts and practices. Um, and then they're looking at, you know, they're strongly suggesting kind of a cool-off period during the, during the winter break. And then competitions wouldn't start until, uh, earlier mid-January. You know, given that we are, you know, uh, currently in a remote learning model, uh, if you remember from the guidance in the fall, uh, the commissioner had asked that all schools who are in remote learning, if they're going to participate in sports, they would, they wanted a, uh, a school committee vote. Uh, we did not need to take that vote in the fall, because at the time we were, we were hybrid and we were open. Uh, this time, because we currently are in remote learning, uh, I think for us to move forward with the winter sports season, we would need a vote of the, of the school committee. Just a couple of things that I would just put into, uh, perspective here, and then I think, you know, I'm sure people want to weigh in on this, but the, um, you know, I know it's kind of difficult to, uh, think about, you know, playing basketball when, when right now we're currently in a remote learning model. But I think what's important to remember here is really the season itself isn't going to start till early to mid-January. Um, and our goal is to be open, um, you know, in, by, by January 19th, which is essentially the beginning of the third week of January, right? So really by the time the season gets going, our hope is that our students are back in school, um, at that time. The, the reason this is being brought up tonight is because, um, if we intend to participate in the season, they're asking athletic, they're asking athletic directors to let them know, uh, because they need to finalize the, the pods, they're going to do a pod system kind of like the fall, where you're going to just kind of play the same group of teams, um, so that they can build schedules and, and those types of things. So, you know, at this point, if we intend to, to move forward with a, a winter season, uh, we would probably need to vote to let them know so that we can kind of get included in that planning process. However, I would say, um, it does not mean that we have to start practices on December 14th, just because they say that's when you can start practices. So, um, you know, I think we could sit and work with the, work with the Board of Health and kind of continue to monitor our data. It could be another topic that we talked about at the 14th at that joint kind of meeting, um, to sort of say, you know, when do we feel it might be appropriate for our teams to start practicing? Um, you know, whether that's, you know, whether that means we, we wait until after, right after the holidays to just try to get them in a little bit. Maybe we could do, you know, some sort of limited tryout or something during that first week, where it's not the traditional tryouts, it's sort of like, you know, you almost come in individually and do sort of like a skills-type thing, so that they can get a sense of how you can play, so they can at least form rosters. Uh, so that then they could try to, you know, be ready to roll with practices, you know, maybe in, you know, af, right after the holidays. So, so that's, uh, those are the options. You know, I guess I would say, if we vote not to participate tonight, um, then we're not going to participate. And we don't really have a recourse of joining later, if that was our decision, um, because the schedules will have been made, everything will have been going. Much like we saw in the fall, there were plenty of teams who, who fully intended to participate in sports, they built schedules, and as teams maybe for different, various reasons had to, shut down their sports programs, um, they were able to kind of more easily just adapt the schedules as they, as they went along. So I think that that's, uh, you know, if we, if we vote to have the sports, uh, programs, um, then I think that that gives us, uh, the ability to, to do so, um, moving forward, but like I said, doesn't bind us to doing it. Uh, we could always say, you know, it could be January 4th, and if our numbers keep going up or something, we could say, you know, that's, uh, thank you, that we've decided, um, you know, upon further review, we're not going to be able to participate, right? So I think that that's, that's sort of the, the situation. And I would say one other point that I know a lot of superintendents, this has been a hot topic with superintendents, I've had a couple superintendent calls, uh, meetings. And, uh, it is really kind of divided, and there's a lot of people that say, you know, from a superintendent level, there's definitely a lot of superintendents that are like, you gotta be kidding me, like this is sports, we're trying to do everything we can to, to bring schools, keep schools open right now, this is just one more thing. But then there's a lot of people who are saying, you know, this is, for a lot of students, this is what engages them in school, these are the types of things that, you know, that, that they're missing out on right now, that if we can try to offer some sort of opportunity, uh, then, then why not? And, um, and then, and then the, the final kind of layer to that is, you know, if you read through these regulations, it's going to be very controlled, there's no fans at the games. Um, we're already looking at trying to make sure we could live stream any games. It's going to be, rosters are going to be capped for basketball at 12 kids on a team, so you're looking at, you know, 26 people in a gym during a game, the 12, 12 players and a coach. So that's, you know, they're trying, they're trying to do the best they can with their regulations and guidance to keep it safe and controlled. And, and the fear is, if you don't try to embrace sort of the, the controlled environment of basketball, what you're doing is you're, you're forcing students who, if that's their passion and that's something they want to do, to try to find leagues or other avenues, um, other club teams or things like that, where there may not be as much control. Um, and there might be more traveling around, and there might not be in a, a contained pod and those types of things. So, so those are kind of the, you know, the, the various factors that, that I think I've, I've come across. You know, I would, and I would, and I'd say when my conversations with Steve Lipka, definitely, you know, I don't think, he's not in favor of, of us having basketball at this time. But he wasn't necessarily opposed to us saying, you know, let's move forward with it and see where we are. So I think that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where we were. Because I think, you know, I think it's important for us to get kids back in school, and we want to do everything we can to get kids back in school. Um, and I really think that by the time the season would really get going, um, you know, hopefully our kids should be back in school and we can see how it goes, so. I guess I'll stop talking and let, see what you guys want to do.
So, uh, I'll open up to the committee with any questions or comments, can we start, can we start? We have Mrs. Goodsell on, on the phone, so maybe it's best to start with her, if she has any.
Hold on one second, Joel.
Hi. So I can't hear on the other piece of the feedback, so I'm going to be talking, but I can't hear Joel or anybody else at this point, so Steve, I'm relying on you.
Okay.
I am totally, I mean.
Sorry, Deb.
Deb.
Sorry. Sorry, point, sorry, Deb, point of order. We have, because we're taking a vote on it, we have to, we should probably make a motion first and then discuss.
Yeah, we can always amend the motion, but we should make a motion to get discussion open.
Okay.
Okay, so I think my motion would be to, to, I mean, I know Steve hit on it, to go ahead and let, give this, and I, you can word it, I don't know how you're going to word all this, all right? To go ahead and give the athletic director our vote, my vote, you know, our vote to, to say yes. Because like Steve said, if we say no, we can't say yes later, right? We can say, but in that same motion, not to start anything any earlier than the 15th, because we meet on the 14th, which will also let us get with the, the Board of Health on the 14th. You know, I mean, it's only one night, right? It's only one day, and, you know, if the numbers are great by then, or we feel differently, you know, fine, if the Board of Health, you know, I mean, you saw the Selectmen's meeting last night, they're going to, they're going to close, what, the, the town on, on Monday? So that's, that's my motion, is just to say yes, but nothing starts any earlier than the 15th, because we can address the practices in, on the 14th with better numbers.
Okay. So would someone like to make?
I'll, I'll second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
Thanks for, well done.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, and, and thank you for that point of order. And, and now Mrs. Goodso, sorry.
So Deb, before you go, were you able to hear that motion?
I was not.
Okay. So the motion was made and seconded to vote to participate in athletics, but not to start anything earlier than December 15th because that would allow the December 14th school committee meeting to kind of set up any firm or make any adjustments based on the data and recommendations from the board of health at that time.
So basically you're postponing any decision until the 14th?
Well, it's kind of authorizing the athletic director to, to say that we intend to participate so he can start getting some signups to gauge interest and he can make sure that we have a schedule. But it's not actually allowing sports to start until the 15th because we would be able to meet on the 14th to determine if we felt that was appropriate at this time.
Okay. I just, just for the record, I just want to note that I am not, I am totally against having indoor sports at this time. I think it's totally irresponsible for us to approve it. You know, children get engaged by many things. The band gets engaged by playing music, the Excel club, the other groups get engaged in school by their things too. So why are we opening up for this one thing? So like I said, that's just my stance on this. I will, like I said, go along with the board as far as voting on the 14th whether to continue or not, but at this point, I am, I am totally against fall sports, winter sports.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Go ahead, Matt, because I already told, and then you could, and all of you.
No, I, I, I want to.
Actually, it's Joel's.
Well, then I will take executive privilege and say that.
Let's rattle tonight, I'm just letting on.
That, I, I agree with Mrs. Goodso from the standpoint that, that I, I would love to see as many extracurricular activities come back as is possible once we bring kids back. I, you know, I think that sports is, is one thing that draws kids to school, but so is band, and so are the arts, and so are the, the social groups and interactions. And I'm in favor of it just because we are looking at this progressive plan to, to, to continue to bring kids in, in, in our remote plus and hopefully, you know, plus, plus, plus. So Mr. Bailey, then Mr. Verakis.
All right. Thanks, Joel. So I, I agree with Deb in that if I had to make a decision tonight, in other words, if it was all or nothing tonight, my, my decision would be no. Because to her point, you know, we can't, if we can't get them back in the, in the classroom. And when we voted not to bring them in the classroom, our numbers are low, were lower then than they are now. However, with the, kind of the all or nothing decision by the, by the league, I, I'm willing to say, okay, we can go two weeks at a time. And, and on the 14th, my thought would be on the 14th, if our numbers are still not there, we, we don't do anything until the two week and then the two week rest period, kind of what Steve said. I just would, don't, I don't think we should play right now, but I don't want to say no and then something happens and our numbers go down in the green and we can't lock it back. Right. So I agree with Deb, I just, I want to make that clear. I, if, again, if we had to decide now, my vote would be no, but if it's just to say, Smitty, now I would ask Steve if, and I know I talked about this earlier, if in the meantime, if Smitty could, I know somebody here said get the rosters and get how many numbers, but also of the towns in our pod or the districts in our pod, how many of those are going to, you know, are kind of in the stable? What's their, you know, what are the other athletic directors, you know, of those? Because I know in the fall, we had, I think there were seven towns in the pod and only like four of them took part in some of the events. So how many are going to be playing and how many kids are signing up and how many, you know, both boys and girls? I think there's what, three boy varsity JV and JV two, and then the girls are varsity and JV, correct? Just kind of, you know, and the same thing with the kids that are going to do the co-op, the students are going to do the co-op, the.
Well, I was going to say, it's probably important to note that this isn't a basketball decision. It's co-op gymnastics, it's co-op hockey, it's basketball, like it's whatever.
Well, that's what I wanted, that's what, to your point, how many of those kids, how many of our students are going to co, are going to co-op at that same time? So how many kids are we talking about by the 15th or the 14th? And then we'll have the board of health and I don't know if they're going to come to this meeting or they're just going to take part in that earlier meeting.
Yeah, he said he was willing to if he, if he'd like him to, so we can.
Yeah. I agree with Deb, but I just don't want us to say no when, in two weeks, we might have, we might have to say, just keep kicking it two weeks and it may be the answer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Verakis.
I think it's a tough one, but, but I think knowing the environment, the way we've seen this go down, like I think there's much larger risk to pulling sports away from our schoolchildren in a school environment for the fact that they're going to go play anyway. So, so they're going to find AAU, they're going to find club sports, they're not going to lose a year of eligibility to continue to get better at something they're passionate about and sit at home. And we've seen that. We, we've literally, we, we've observed that. So I think although it may seem counterintuitive to, to say we're in remote plus, we shouldn't have sports. But remote plus has 200 kids in the school, so the schools aren't empty. There's people in the schools and we're doing it in a controlled environment safely. I think it's also, you know, worth noting that the state at the beginning of the year labeled sports like hockey and basketball as sports they wouldn't recommend that we play at the state level. That's no longer the case. The state has re, re-looked at that and they're allowing for hockey to be played at the state level. They're allowing for basketball to be played at the state level specifically for what's in our packet on how it needs to happen and the guidelines under the understanding of a COVID environment. So, so for me, you know, 36 kids playing basketball or six athletes playing co-op, I agree with Mr. Bailey and Deb around, it, it needs to be monitored. There's some risk associated with it, but this is risk that parents are going to sign on for because it's their children to sign on to play sports, much like parents can decide if they want to be in remote or they want to be in the building. No one's demanding these kids play sports. This is something that they're going to enter into freely and parents are going to give their consent to do so. So for me, with the limited amount of, of opportunity we have to engage these kids, whether it's today or two weeks from now or a month from now, unless something really catastrophic happens, I would vote to approve a winter season under the guidelines of looking at the data, being strict about the policies, and executing against the recommendations that the state as well as the MIA have for us. And, and I think that's the way I would look at it.
Okay. Mrs. Zapantis, anything?
No, I just appreciate the, the handout and the information that we got. I mean, it, it looks like these COVID protocols and guidelines, the Midland Watches at League, I mean, you know, they spent a lot of time and energy, you know, and thought going into this. It seems to be, you know, very organized. I know we had successful fall seasons where I don't think we had any type of transmissions. I know, I appreciate the handout from Mr. Smith and explaining everything and, and I'd have to hope that come December 16th, we have, we have better numbers and, and it's something that we could make feasible for the kids.
Yeah, I agree. And I would say that, you know, I mean, there are high schools that have been fully remote that have had fall seasons without incident with, you know, these protocols in place. So I, I, I would add to that and echo that, that I appreciate the, this, I mean, this is a 20-something page document of procedures and protocols. It is, it is well thought out and, and that gives me some confidence. Unless there are any other questions, we'll take a vote. And Mary, would you mind repeating the motion back?
Yep. Bailey moved to, Bailey moved to participate in winter athletics, however not starting any earlier than December 15th in order to meet with the board of health and the school committee on the 14th, 12th of the day.
Okay.
And Tina Zapantis seconded.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, that requires a roll call vote. I'll start alphabetically. Joel Bates, aye.
Matt Verakis, aye.
Tina Zapantis, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Deborah Goodso, opposed.
Thank you. Four to one.
Thank you.
Okay. So just, sorry. I don't know, and I know, I'm sorry to bring this up at the end, but what the heck. Along with Smitty getting the numbers, could you ask him to get, to talk to the coaches and see if, if in fact on the 14th, we decide it's better not to prac, not to do the trials for those two weeks and then they're off for the, what, two weeks? Could they, would they feel confident if, if at the end of that month, could they do a trial in a, in a practices and get right back online? If I'm, you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, you want us to just try to, when I meet with Mr. Smith to go over this, to try to make sure that we sort of have a timeline and we know sort of what is our, essentially what is our dropdown, dead date?
Right.
If we keep kicking it down the road, at what point, you know, if we say we'll wait another week or we'll wait two more weeks, at what point is it?
Yeah. If we go get through the Christmas holiday, you know, even if the, if the board of health says, listen, we'd prefer, you know, as, as they are closing the town hall and so forth, we prefer you not to practice or not to do anything on those two weeks, and then the other two weeks are a dead weekend, two dead weeks. Could they, would they feel confident they could pick it up at that point and still be on with the season?
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to get the, that, I'll try to make sure we have that kind of timeline information for the 14th so we're, so we're aware of that.
Cool.
And I'll also say I can, you know, talk to, when I talk to Mr. Smith about that too, it might be something where I think the earliest game date they threw out there was January 7th, and I think what we might just try to say is, you know, I don't know if they're doing, if there's going to be open dates or, but we might say, can you, can you, can you delay us in the schedule a couple, a couple of days because we're probably not starting on time?
You'll get, you'll get the feedback on that survey just about that same time too for this phase two or whatever that you're talking, right?
Yeah, exactly. We'll have that same type of feedback too. So I'm hoping on the 14th, I'm hoping on the 14th, we can, we can have a little bit more preliminary picture of what our reopening would look like for the students and then that, and hopefully maybe a, a better timeline of what, how that factors in with, with winter sports and that timing.
Yeah, I think logistically just around if, if the intent to participate is they're just getting the coaches and, and Smith, Mr. Smith out there to, to find out who wants to participate, because we don't even know what our numbers are going to be like, you know, how we feel about it or, or the, or the guidance we want to give to the town is different than parents deciding, as I said, if they want to allow their kids to participate. So if you have 32 spots in boys' basketball and 24 slots in girls' basketball, and we kind of need to know what the demand for that's going to be as well because that's going to help us in regard to supporting the athletic department in logistics around, do you need to have tryouts? If sign, if there's 32 slots and you get 31 kids, guess what? There's not as much a sense of urgency around tryouts, it's more around roster construction as to who plays at what level. So I think getting that information out there to the kids and the families as soon as we can, that the intent is to participate, and if we were to do so, would you sign up? Those numbers would be helpful for us.
Okay. Okay. So one, the next topic on here was just a calendar clarification, and I don't know if, I don't know if this needs to be voted or not, but previously we had made December 15th, December 15th is identified as a half day for professional development. So previously we had said that was going to be a full remote day because at the time we made that change, we were in a hybrid model. What we would like, what we're recommending now is since we are kind of on that shortened remote plus day, what we'd like to do is, you know, keep it as a professional development day, but we'd run it as a, as the regular remote plus we're running now, so that the kids who are coming in the building would still come in the building in the morning. And then what would happen is in the afternoon, once they leave, teachers wouldn't have any remote classes in the afternoon, that's when we would do the professional development. So I don't know if you, I don't, I guess, I mean, it's, it's a calendar clarification. I think that's, you know, that's.
Maybe it's a formality, but it's a profound formality. Would, would someone like to?
I'll make a motion that they can run December 15th as a typical remote plus day.
Okay.
How about a, half day remote plus PD day? Yeah. That's why I didn't make that motion, Matt.
The motion will be for a half a day of PD and a half a day of remote plus per the outline.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor, Joel Bates, aye.
Matt Verakis, aye.
Tina Zapantis, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Deborah Goodso, aye.
Thank you. Unanimous.
All right. And I guess the last thing I have an update on is the facility director. We mentioned before the job has been posted. I think we need to have it open for, you know, a certain number of weeks or in the paper for so many weeks by the, for the bylaw. So we should be able to start reviewing those resumes, we're hoping next week. We did, the selectmen have voted to appoint two people to the committee. I think we've appointed two people to the committee. I think that there's a member of the personnel board that'll be on the committee and Alexis will be on the committee as long as, as well as Mr. Ward and myself. I don't know exactly what role we'll have, hopefully we have more of sort of a facilitator role in the first round. Our plan is to probably try to get that committee together next week, so we'll just start trying to reach out to, to check people's availability to schedule that. When I spoke with Mr. Ward about this today, he did say that so far I think we have over 60 resumes. And I think, I think we're going to, I think Alexis is going to probably be sort of coordinating the search as far as the, the meetings and the timelines and those types of things. So we can try to hopefully move through it, you know, pretty quickly. It's an important position and I think we want to fill it with, with the right person. So we don't want to rush it too, too much, but it's also because it's an important position, we need to fill it quickly, so.
Steve, are we conducting exit interview with Director Carlstad? Or maybe that's a question for the HR director or if that's even appropriate for me to even ask it that way, but are we doing that?
I think the facilities committee met with them to get a little bit, and they'll probably talk about that under the subcommittee.
We've got subcommittee reports coming up.
Awesome. Did I get a call? Did they get all of them, just me?
Uh, they all got them.
Okay, yeah.
And then I think, and Mike Ward and I are still working on kind of talking to, you know, Mr. Carlstad around the final, final transition and kind of that, that exit interview type process.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, that brings us to our subcommittee reports. Has there been a curriculum, there probably not yet, right? A curriculum committee scheduled?
No, and I, and we're, that's one of the things we're going to try to determine at our next budget meeting when we talk about some of the curriculum recommendations for next meeting. And then if we have any anticipated changes or, or reviews to the handbooks, we'll probably schedule one for like January-ish or something like that.
Okay.
But it's kind of tough because a lot of, you know, even some of the changes that we tried to implement last year, it's, it's been tough to try to even implement them this year. So it's, you know, you're almost hoping that we're going to be able to kind of do what we planned for this year, next year.
Okay. Yeah. You probably need to get a handle on what school's going to look like first before you. All right. Anything from the safety committee?
I mean, we've been meeting pretty consistently, so.
Is it next week we have a, do we have one on the? I don't want to hang up on Deb. Forget when our next one was.
Do you have a low one, say?
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct. I think it's the, it's next, it's a week from tomorrow. Yeah. I believe that's right. So, so the safety committee meeting will be meeting on the 11th. I guess the only other thing we could say is, yeah, we'll probably meet on the 11th, but then we'll have that, and then we'll have that next meeting, hopefully on the, that other meeting on the 14th, so that'll be good.
Okay. Anything from marketing?
No, we decided we're going to hold off till after the new year.
That's right. You reported on that last time. I apologize.
Okay, just, so I will apologize, we did not get a November newsletter out. It just kind of, there was a lot going on and it kind of, kind of got away. However, the good news is we are working on our, our December one and the, the newsletter is something that is one of the things that Guadalupe will be taking over in her role as the family outreach coordinator. So she'll be able to, to, to assist with putting that together and getting it out.
Joel, if I could just back up.
Yeah.
On the safety subcommittee, I plan on going to that meeting on Monday depending[1715.83] I plan on going to that meeting on Monday, depending on what time the, it's very similar to the, the safety meeting we had when this all first started. It's like the police, the fire, so I just, I just haven't got a time yet. Steve, Lipka mentioned it this, today, and then Steve just mentioned it, but I don't, tell me what time it is, I'll probably go.
Yeah, okay. All right, we just, if the other boards aren't going to have a quorum there, we would just want to make sure that we're coordinating it.
Yeah, I think that the last time.
I would like to go, but.
Yeah, well, I'll get with you, let's just figure out the time.
We just, if someone else wants to go, I'll step aside. We just can't have more than two there.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I think the intent was not to have it be too, too big, or too much of a posted meeting, so we wouldn't want to have, we wouldn't want a quorum there.
Yeah, but, all right. So I am in possession of a letter. Dear Mr. Bates, on behalf of the Clinton Teachers Association, we request to open negotiations for a successor agreement between the Clinton School Committee and the Clinton Teachers Association. We look forward to working with you and the committee to move forward on successful negotiations. Sincerely, Robin Quist, President. So we can, we can start that process when this committee and the CTA are ready to do so. And I guess Dr. Meyer, if you can sort of bridge a timeline of what that looks like, then we can.
I had a couple preliminary conversations the other day, just trying to figure out if the Board of Selectmen are going to send a representative, as they typically do, and if so, who that's going to be. Kind of once we have that, that position sort of filled, I think we'll probably try to, you know, get together, I think our first step would probably just to be a meeting of our negotiating team, once we have the, the selectman there, so that we can kind of discuss some of our internal strategy. And then I was talking, when I was talking to Robin at our meeting this afternoon, we were probably targeting, hopefully, early January to, to try to have our first kind of joint meeting, if we can get our strategy meeting probably in, in December. So that's, I think that would be sort of our preliminary timeline, and, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Joel, is that a standing, Matt and I did the last one, is that a standing committee, or is it change every?
So typically, when, when we get to the, the teacher's contract, the chair has, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the chair has appointed people that have been interested. I don't think we have a set negotiating subcommittee. In fact, I think our past practice has been, we've mixed it up a little bit.
Yeah, I've been the last three.
Oh, yeah, so.
It was because of the, of the time and the availability and some conflicts here and there, so it just became.
Right, and I can see both sides of it, that, that it makes sense to have the whole perspective across the board for all of the different bargaining units. I also think it's a big commitment, and, and, you know, and if somebody else wants to step in, then that's, that's okay to.
That was my point, just let me know.
Okay, all right. Well, let's do it this way. If, if you would like to, let me know, and then we'll, you know.
Yeah, I think at our, at our reorg meeting, I mean, the, the people we did appoint, I think was Mr. Verakis and Mr. Bailey, but I think, you know, I guess to his point, if you wanted to change that, you could.
For the negotiations?
I believe so. I believe when we did this, the, after the reorganization meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think we vote on it every year. I think it could change every year.
Will we, this year? When we did the reorganization for this year?
Yeah, I believe so, the one, when like.
I think we do vote on it every year. I don't remember the timing on it, but I know we, I think we vote on it every year.
Joel, anyhow, I'm happy to stay on if that's, I mean, my schedule, my schedule allows, I'm happy to do it.
And as does mine. So I'm there.
All right.
Unless you want to punt me, in which case I'll understand.
Okay.
But that's up to you, you're the chair.
Okay. We have nothing new under policies and procedures, and Mrs. Goodso and I have not talked about it yet. But I, I'm wondering if maybe we want to meet. I was just, just found out that MAS C had put out some new, that we didn't have the annual MAS C. Well, I guess they had a remote conference, we didn't attend. But I guess there's some new language on some of the, on some policies relative to lessons learned through COVID-19 and some recent court cases. So it's probably worth us taking some time to look through that. But as I said, I haven't spoken with Mrs. Goodso about it yet, but maybe.
I know, I know you mentioned you saw some of those. If you want to forward them to, to us, and we can look at it, and then we can maybe try to schedule, you know, see if we want to schedule a time, even if we do a remote meeting, just to kind of look at it.
Okay. Facilities.
So, Deb will be able to hear me, but Deb and I met with, with Mr. Carlstad last Wednesday. He gave us a rundown. He had met, I don't know if he met with the finance committee, but he met with the selectmen, and they told him to kind of give him, you know, his, kind of his wish list next year for, for capital improvement for the schools. So Deb forwarded it to Steve, and I think he ought to have a copy. And so just, you know, Russ gave this to us, knowing that, you know, when he met with the selectmen, that, and went with Mike Ward, that, you know, he has no idea what, how much money we're going to get. So this is kind of, you know, if, you know, if they can support, and I, I don't have the total here, but if they could support all this, this is what he saw as the schools needing next year. So like I said, it's, I think it, oh, here it is, amounts to 1.2 million. And again, he's not, you know, he doesn't know how much they'll have in the capital improvement for the schools, but this is kind of what he saw. And it was, it was good, you know, he gave us, you know, his honest assessment of, you know, where the, where the schools are at now, and, you know, if he had stuck around, this is what he'd be pushing for, for next year, so.
I will say, it doesn't look that surprising. I mean, these are things that have come up when we've gone through walkthroughs with him. These are things that have come up when, you know, he's talked about long-term plans as well, so. I, I don't see anything on here that, that looks brand new to me.
No, it wasn't any shocking.
Right. Okay.
Quick question, if you don't mind?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Brittany, did, did, in that, in that time that you met with him, did, was it, did we specifically just go over the, the process and protocol as to what we've been upkeeping as far as COVID sanitization goes? Like what protocols, who's doing what work? Because I imagine, like, just from a checklist perspective, and just the upkeep on the environment that we're in, that's, that's a fairly unique thing that's been going on the past six to eight months. I imagine the building custodians are probably, you know, fairly aware of it, but I'd just be curious as to where the handoff of the baton happened with his exit. And now where we are today, are we confident that we can continue down the path that we were before with no interruptions in regard to the safety of students, staff, and, and sort of that process? Did he articulate any of that to you guys in that exit interview, or is it?
So the short answer is, I, I don't really understand it. I don't know who.
Brittany, do you want me to answer that?
Thank you.
Okay, so basically, there is a transition period right now, and there are certain people that are in charge of certain different things. Miguel is one of the head custodians. He's doing a lot of the maintenance now as well. But Russ is still on board as far as helping out one day a week and keeping things going until a replacement can be found. And he's working very closely with town administrator and, you know, those that were under him previously to make sure that everything runs smoothly during the transition.
Great.
And I, and I would just, I guess, I'm meeting, I have a meeting scheduled for Monday, a meeting with Miguel, and a meeting with, also meeting with Casey Gannon, because we're going to have to kind of go back to sort of reassessing our, our snowplowing communication lines, too. So we're just trying to make sure we get all of those kind of loose ends tied up, so we can, to your point, Matt, keep moving forward, and not, not all of a sudden find out like, you know, someone's just stopped doing something, so.
Yep. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you. Anything under old business?
Joel, I got.
Yes, sir.
One thing, I talked with the selectmen at DeValle yesterday, or the day before, about getting, moving on that subcommittee for the abandoned property, specifically for us, the fire station. And because the town, for those, you know, they just auctioned off, I don't know, considerable amount of abandoned property in town, and I believe the town brought in about $400 and something thousand dollars on that. So the, the way I understand it is they're looking at doing this, you know, kind of a yearly thing until they get all this property. So, you know, what, you know, I know they had other town property, but, you know, getting that subcommittee, which we mentioned probably six months ago. So I think Deb and I are on it. So, you know, I don't know when, I'll get with that and kind of keep it rolling.